I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Force Education Boarder. Will you please join me in the French reception?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jenny, would you please call the board? This is Bassler. Here. Mr. Wubble.
Here.
This is O'Conner. Here. This is Shaffer. Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Do you have a sign? Jenny, would you please call the board? This is O'Conner. Yes. This is Bassler. Yes. This is Mr. Wubble.
Yes.
This is Shaffer. Yes. We have student recognition this evening and in order to allow our students to get back home if they so choose and they'd like to save our entire meeting, we're certainly warmly welcome to do so. But we're going to move right into that first thing and with that, Nancy, are you going to use our students?
Do you mean no evidence?
No, no word. Mr. Miller, Mrs. London, I'd like to thank our students and their families for being with us this evening to celebrate not only 10 students, but for our employees, the students have liked giving little background information. During the last four years, juniors over 1.6 million students in more than 22,000 high schools throughout the United States took the PSA team and MSU team to the nation. But this nationwide poll, less than 1% of this year's high school seniors have been the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. 10 of these students represent Lakota East and Lakota West High Schools. According to the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, to become a finalist, semifinalist, must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed or recommended by a school official, submit an essay, and earn an SAT score that confirms his or her performance on the qualifying test he or she takes as a junior. The National Merit finalist will be announced in February. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our top National Merit semifinalists, who will tell you a little bit about themselves. From Lakota East, Chloe Huggins, William Futter, Albert Lee, Adreese Malik, and from Lakota West, Michelle Bowman, Anwaishe Adey, Alexander Everett, Megan Shaffer, Linnea Sipola, and Manny Wilson. It's also important to note that less than one quarter of 1% of the students received a perfect score on May 17th this year, and Albert Lee and Adreese Malik are two of them. Please welcome our National Merit semifinalists.
Hi, I'm Alex Ever, I'm from Lakota West. So, I'm planning to take my place as one of the guys who I was expecting. I've had a really good experience with Lakota West. It's really good, it built up, I had a good experience with Lakota West. Especially with the end program, that's really my role in this field. So, just acknowledge that I've had a great experience with Lakota West.
Can you make them louder? Microphone?
You all speak really brilliantly during the conference.
Okay, is this good?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, my name is Adreese Malik. I am currently a senior at Lakota East High School. My plans for next year, I'm going to apply to a few different colleges. I'm planning on majoring in physics or some other science field to go into a science related career. I'm not really sure yet, but I want to go with that. I've had a really good experience in Lakota. I've met a lot of teachers, especially the high schoolers, really like. And they just made a personal impact on me to like, find some true meaning of learning ways to ask questions you don't understand and like, actually think about what you're learning other than just for a test. So, I've had a good experience.
Hi, my name's Albert Lee and I'm a senior at Lakota East High School. And two teachers that have really helped me throughout high school are Mr. McCain, who teaches computer science at Lakota East. He's really helped me open my eyes up to the IT fields and how much I could do with it. And also Mr. Wright, he teaches honors physics. And he's a great person overall and he's like a great person to talk to after school a lot of times. And he also helps me with physics, obviously. And I do a lot of scientific things, like scientific clubs, like Science Olympiad, Math and Physics Team, things like that. And I'm applying to OSU and then University of Oxford in England, but I really hope to get into physical, like Spam at Rises and a few other colleges, so.
Hi, I'm Anwaishe, I'm a senior at Lakota West High School and even though I'm a senior, I'm very honored. I actually went to Lakota East for most of my life, because I was a freshman in Lakota West. So, I passed Lakota for the entire life and I really cannot imagine living anywhere else. I'm going to the future, including a new science major, and I need to know the next one.
My name's Chloe Huggins and I'm a senior at Lakota East. And I want to go to the field of aerospace engineering. And something like, something big that has helped me was, I didn't even think I liked physics. I was even sure about taking honors physics this year. And then Mr. Wright and Doc Sevins this year have helped me realize that I actually love physics and I want to go into engineering. So, that was pretty exciting and so I would love to go to Virginia Tech or Purdue if I could.
Hi, my name's Linnea Sipola. I'm a senior at Lakota West. I'm applying to the colleges this fall and I'm going to Russian Revolution Organization. My experience with Lakota is very great. I love all my teachers. I can't imagine teaching hundreds of teenagers a day at the same thing to do it for excellence if you do it, it's just crazy.
Hello? Is this good? Okay. Hi, I'm Nadie, I'm from Lakota West. I've gone to Lakota my entire life. I've been involved in marching band all four years and have been all over the place. I'm an active quiz team, I president the French club. For next year, I'm applying to more colleges that probably have business to apply to. And I would perhaps major in saving the world, can exactly do that. So, in the meantime, I'll probably be majoring in environmental science or nutrition sciences.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bowman. I will be applying to more colleges and majoring in communications or advertising. As for impactful parts of Lakota, I have to give props to the amazing leader program at West. That's definitely the extracurricular I am the most involved in. As it's given me opportunities to be in not only plays and musicals, but I also got the chance this year to student direct the active learning class. And that's simply taught me a lot, in addition to obviously my core classes have taught me a lot. So, yeah, I just would like to thank everyone at Lakota for making my journey. Four years here, awesome.
Hi, I'm Megan Shaffer. I've been at Lakota my whole life. I plan on going to major in handful engineering for now to college. And then, I have, I've loved every school I've been at, but since we're at my end of the month now, one of my teachers here, Mr. Ollie, he helped me, I was in math club first of all, so I was introduced to him. They have these cool slide shows, math club is a good place. And so then he helped me skip grade in math and we really just worked together and built up like a personal connection throughout learning and math.
I'm Will Coger, I'm a senior at East. I would like to go to Ohio State next year. I'm not really sure whether I would like to be in there quite yet. Obviously Lakota East is a great place to be academically, I probably won't be anywhere else. But my favorite memory is athletics. I play baseball and last year on senior day, we got to come back to Lakota West. That's my favorite.
All of you, take a break after we have any questions. If there's one question, please. Has there been any questions or observations in addition to academic success? Have there been so many other activities, clubs, and leadership roles outside of that? Is the observation of the well-being this fellow student is continuing to demonstrate really interesting? Congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, it's very, very special, very proud of you all. The sense is so very all around, it's about some pride to hold. We'd be anxious to see if you can help.
I don't have anything, any questions, but I see some very proud faces in the audience and parents and family members that are excited about everything you've done and probably just more proud than we are, but we're pretty proud of you as well.
For me, I'm holding both hats, so I might be, I have a parent face as well as a board member face. So, very proud for all of you, but especially proud as a parent. So, congratulations to all of you. And we'd like to invite you all to come up here and take your photo and we have some exciting gifts for you. You can join us up here. Congratulations. Thank you. Very proud of you.
Our room just got a little bit emptier this evening, but congratulations to all of our students. We kicked off our Reach Out Lakota Food Drive at our East-West game. And so we appreciate everyone being there at the bus, to help start stuffing the bus. That will end on October 26th. East will be playing Sickmore that evening and West will be playing Polring. And our competition, instead of being an east versus west competition this year, is against, against, I'll use that word loosely, Mason and Middletown. So, whomever gets the most food gets the honor of having the other superintendent wear their spirit wear. So, Matt is hoping that Lakota will bring in the most food so that he does not have to wear Middletown or Mason's spirit wear.
I don't look at it in purple. I certainly don't look at it in green. I just look at it red.
Yes. So, we'll continue to work on the Reach Out Lakota Food Drive and look forward to that. Our next board meeting, which traditionally has been October 22nd, Matt is going to be out of town, so we are switching that to October 29th. And that, instead of our traditional work, or our traditional board meeting, is going to be a special work session. And we had previously said when we did a work session that we weren't going to take any votes and historically that will be the case. For this particular work session, because we're up against a deadline, our five-year forecast has to be approved by November 1st. So, for this specific work session, we will have to approve the five-year forecast at this one. So, we just wanted to clarify that because previously we had said when we had work sessions that we weren't going to approve anything and this particular one, we will have to. So, that will be, we will be approving the five-year forecast at this particular work session. So, we just wanted to clarify that. And then just something for the board. I had sent out an email that we had talked about wanting to do. We had had a board work session a while back, I can't remember the date. And at that, we had talked about a couple of things. We had talked about doing a board handbook and we're still trying to get some clarification from the person at OSBA that we've worked with. And we'll continue to try to get that information so we can move forward on those board handbooks. But also on October 29th, we wanted to start, with all the professional development our staff is doing, we wanted to potentially start a book study that day and kick off doing professional development for the board and make that a tradition at our work sessions as well. So, just take 15, 20 minutes at the beginning or at some point during our work sessions to kind of kick off and do some board development as well. So, that was an idea that we had had talked about, that I talked about with Matt, about doing that at the, at the work session. So, I wanted to bring that up and see if that was something that was commendable to the board. We hope to have those books viewed, talked about. A book called Culturize is potentially something that would be an easy read and just do a chapter or two so it wouldn't be onerous on anyone and get thoughts about doing that. People were agreeable to that. So, that was another thought.
Wow. We didn't read, now we're breaking.
The sound people don't apparently like that, but.
I apologize. I'm going to talk really loud.
So, the book is a really good one. One of our teachers has read Culturize. We also know the author and he will help us learn the, when to do Skype or Google Hangout. I think that'll be pretty good as well. Amazon was supposed to have the books here yesterday. I apologize if they did not get here, so just to get them, get them to theater pretty quick and easy.
Are we supposed to be doing the real work session? The time I did book club, I have to plan my reading.
I promise, this wants to rest you out.
I'm usually up in 94 book clubs, 15.
We'll go ahead and send out a plan.
Okay, perfect.
I'm excited about it. I think this is a great step for our board, not only for the book study. I read the book and I think it's a great book. But I also really like that we're going to start moving more towards getting the board handbook and that kind of stuff in place for when we have our organization meeting in January, but also just for our ongoing future board members down the line. I think it's a great step for our board as well. So, thank you for helping me get that moving.
Let me explain a little bit, because we don't have. Is everyone commendable to the thought of doing this?
Yeah, I mean, they said, I mean, that we always have to double that gap.
Sure. Any other mission book studies that we would also consider professional conferences? And those opportunities that we have for us to, you know, we don't always make the management decisions and that's important for professional work. So, we can talk more about that at the work session on, on October 29th. When the three of us had talked about it, we thought maybe when we go to the school board conference in November, that we could maybe do a second round of talking about the book while we're there, taking, maybe with a back professional developer. Taking this in order to set that back on, taking some time there. So, it was a thought that we had, but we didn't talk about that one. If people were able, it's a first step, we can try to ask them that as soon as possible.
It would be helpful as well. I don't know if this is a January thing or if it's just something I can get online and figure out. Maybe it's something that you can bring. A list of this coming year, what's the professional development that OSBA has in mind or other organizations? I know a lot of times when it comes up on our radars, you know, we're just doing, that's not a you thing. It's just they, they pop up, you know, what's going on. It'd be great. I don't know. I mean, if it's something I can subscribe to, I can do that.
I think it's mutual withdrawal. Do they have an calendar that they really have to log into their bar? Do they have a calendar that will pretty, go out pretty far with the like? Usually like semi-January thing, I think if we want to.
More than year.
Oh, okay.
Some things would be kind of like a school safety and security.
Yes, that would be, yeah, something like that.
But the usual, maybe.
Yes, I think always maybe send up, don't get emails and then they get lost in the shuffle. I'd like to say kind of maybe it's that.
What I'll do is I'll go online, online and I'll do all the, maybe the year we can talk about. Some things I think are great for everybody to go to or whoever needs to be there. There are some things that if one of us wanted to go, come back and bring them in, that would make sense. And that keeps our travel consistent and keeps us going out all the time. I know there's a lot of opportunities. So, I don't mind if anyone's.
Another discussion on this? Right, superintendent comments, you want to get into the report card?
Thank you, Mrs. Shaffer. I have a few slides tonight to go over with the board and with our public about the local report card that recently came out, but also the quality profile report that'll be coming out here probably this week. They've turned it and they're, they're being found now. One thing I will say is I appreciate the Ohio Department of Education's change on their stance in terms of the importance of the report card. While accountability is very, very important to me, to a lot of others, there's been a lot of focus on just that portion for students in Ohio. Recently Superintendent Di Maria from the Ohio Department of Education just released the new five-year strategic plan for the state of Ohio, for the Ohio Department of Education. While their report card is still important, there are other factors that are also equally important now in terms of assessment, including safety and security, including technology and social emotional learning supports for students. I'm hoping because of that, and time is short order, then the report card will be modified to kind of coincide with the five-year strategic plan for ODE. So, that's more of a hope right now, but I'm thinking that that'll happen through conversations I've had as part of this state superintendent advisory team that has come to light. Let me talk a little bit about where we are as a district. You can see this is sort of a snapshot of the latest data that we have on our students in our school district. The district overview grade of a B, that district overview, that's the first time we've had a letter. Last year it just said to be assigned, so we come out of the gate with a B, I wanted to let you know that. And I'm going to talk briefly about the six other areas and how we score and the things that we're working on as a school district. I mentioned before, just recent, just now, that the district overview grade is something new that the Ohio Department of Education has done. I will tell you as a superintendent for the first time now, I'm pleased that there's obviously room for improvement to be more of an A school district for, for what goes into that. The state of Ohio has 608 school districts this year, 28 of the 608 had an A. So, certainly would like to join that group next year. 191 schools of the 608 had a B. There were 253 school districts in Ohio that had a C, 122 that had a D, and 14 that had an A. So, we are in the top third and obviously we have a little bit more room for improvement in that aspect. One of the six categories is achievement. This is how well our students perform on a, on the test and how they do it. It's the, it's the grade card. You can see there's two components to this. There is the performance index, indicators met. We were a B last year on the performance index and there's a weighted value to how our kids perform on that test. And indicators met, last year we had a D and we are up now to a C. So, we're making a little bit of progress, but they change that line, they change those metrics every single year. The other main cog is progress for our students. So, how much growth do our kids make from one year to the next? It's one thing to see how many kids pass a test or what they score on that test and add it, add a weighted percentage to that. But it's also probably equally important to see what progress and growth that our kids make from one year to the next. In the progress measure, we retain our A rating. And in the subcategories of overall gifted, students with the lowest 20% achievement and our students with disabilities, we retain As in all four of those areas. Kudos to our students, teachers, and staff, parents on that. We also, for the component grade, in graduation, we can retain our A ranking. We graduated 1,224 students last year. 81% of those students are pursuing higher education. It was a pretty high number when you compare us to other schools across the state. We also take pride in that 54 of those graduating seniors are serving their country in the armed forces. One of the areas that we slipped in is K3 reader grade or early literacy grade. If you recall, two years ago, we were an F district. We bumped that up to a B and we slid down to a C. So, some of the things that we are doing to address this, I think one of the biggest things will be our all-day kindergarten option for our students. I think that certainly helps early literacy. I also believe that going to a K2 band instead of a K1 band will have that early education focus for our kids as well. I think that'll help. We are also in January going to launch our new phonics initiative for kindergarten first and second grade. We're going through training right now for our teachers in those three grade levels. And we're rolling that out and building that out to kick that off this coming January. Our gap closing measure takes a look at, and this is an area that we went from a, from a C to a B this year, so this is another area that we went up in. The gap closing looks at different areas and factors. It's pretty close to some of the growth measurements that we took a look at in the other scores. But I think one of the key focuses for us that will help with gap closing is we're focusing in on our ESL learners, our students with disabilities, our students on 504s. We're taking more of a team approach where maybe, you know, four years ago, five years ago, eight years ago, we might have had more silos in those departments. And so, we're trying to take more of a cross-the-district approach to helping our students because if you help them in one area, it kind of goes to several different areas. Prepared for Success is what it's called, it's not what it really means. You can take a look at the red circles I have. Some of the data that they use for Prepared for Success comes from our graduation class of 2015 and also the graduation class of 2011. It's really hard for us to gauge the impact of post-secondary education for our students from those classes. You don't always get a lot of data around that. One of the things that I'm actually advocating for, because let's face it, once kids leave our high school, it's really hard to get information back on, what are you doing now? Did you finish college or did you enter the workforce? And it's really hard to get that data from students, not just at Lakota, but across the state. And so, this is an area I have a little bit of concern with, just preparing our kids for what we've been. for what we've been working on in terms of real-world learning. One of the ideas that we actually kicked around at the state superintendent meeting was because we don't get a lot of data back on our graduates, would be to require student, I guess not students, but adults, they turn 21 and get that new driver's license. They all want that 21 for some reason. But we do not need the form for the new license, that there's a portion of the information that you have to share of your doing. And so that, that still might be skewed, but at least it's an opportunity that, hey, you're going to get your license, but by the way, you have to answer these three or four questions. Something like that, I think would help us really take a look at what our kids are doing. We are also in this area, it probably won't show for a few years, but our increase in the real world, world learning challenge collaborative in terms of more internships for our kids, but also the portrait of graduate that our curriculum department is working on. I think those are things that will, it's not that I'm worried about this group, but I think it just helps overall our students and their future and what they will be. The other component that is equally important in my eyes and hopefully yours too, is the quality profile report. Electronically this went out on October 1st and it's going to be mailed to our community later this week, so I'm hoping it hits mailbox this week or, or early next week, but it takes a look at what else does our, our community and families value. These are just a little bit of the snippets that you'll see. The board actually has a copy and draft at their place now. But some of the things that we're working on as a school district that are having ripple effects across the buildings and across the grade levels include the no-land award that we received last year, but also with photos included into the League of Innovative Schools Strategic Promise. We're working on that real-world learning challenge collaborative now. We are trying to put our students out front. I mean, you saw, this is pretty intimidating for me to be up here after those 10 kids were up here talking about what they were doing and the, the brain power in the room, as it were. But we're trying to get our kids out front and get some exposure for some of the great work that they're doing in the classroom. We have three student groups that I've been presenting at the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference. I don't know another district that has that many, but I'm glad that our kids are getting out there and are focusing on some of the innovation, some of the things that they want to do once they hit graduation. Another key factor about our school district are the offerings and opportunities you have at Lakota. So some people sometimes think you're so big, you're so massive, my kid's going to get lost and it's overwhelming. That's not been my experience. I'm sure there are some that feel that way, but with size, there also comes some mobility in terms of offerings for students. The clubs, the sports, our music programs, our theater program. You heard one young lady talk about that tonight. And that's just as important for our kids as everything that they do in the classroom. Another shout out for our students that I'll say is we have middle school students Wednesday leaving our district live Lakota Head Chat on Twitter, which I never thought would happen with students at that age. We believe in student voice. We also believe in accountability. Coming up the steps and taking a look at some of the posters and, and things that are on the walls just here at Plains, you see that you plus R equals O. So you talk about what the event is, what your response is and what the outcome is. Mr. Vogelman's done a great job with instilling that culture in all of our schools at K12. And so that's another positive culture piece that we're trying to accomplish with the district. For our community, we continue to have our coffee connections, our fan pairs for our kids that the community is also involved in, and our community conversations that we have as a district. Other things that I think make Lakota stand out include the casual for a cause campaign that a lot of our employees take part in to raise funds for different foundations in Westchester and every township, the stuff of us initiative that Mrs. Schaefer already alluded to, and things like volleyball that carry a boat west and east. I think helps us stand out and give our kids a, a look at, a picture of what else is important than just A through F report cards. I would be remiss if I did not mention a lot of the community input that we've had related to safety. And one example of that would be our Raptor system where our now visitors and volunteers enter the building and how that process works. We finally have a consistent setup as, as much as we can right now for all 23 of our buildings. The executive team today working on the reunification piece in the event that something would happen and that's tied in with Raptor. And Mr. Vogelman and Mr. Passard and Mr. West, they ran point on that with the other members of the executive team. We had representatives there from the Butler County Sheriff's Office and Westchester Police Department and we're practicing that reunification app coming up here in just a couple of weeks. You don't want to get obviously excited about an app and reunification process, but I think we're in a good spot. We're amazed at everything that it can do. So hopefully it would make that unfortunate incident go a little bit smoother for us. Book squad, we had book squad presentation of about three hours last Friday for some of our staff members working on the mental health team. Kind of where we've been, this is also moving forward piece, but where we've been and where we're going. Obviously all-day K was a huge initiative, the specials coming back and the input that we're getting on the one-to-one rollout for the junior schools, we're extending that to high schools sooner than I thought. I won't tell the date, but it's coming. And also the high school redesign. And so that's really, really important for us to get that right and build that together with our teachers and there's some student voice components in that as well. I think I'm really, I'm probably most excited about that and what that's going to bring to our high schools. And it's not just a high school initiative, it's a K12 initiative because eventually everybody will get to the high school. But I'm glad that we're building up with teachers and creating opportunities for kids. And we keep saying it and it's starting to, to happen. I had a meeting today, this afternoon with a couple of teachers at West and Mr. Wheatley about just doing a TEDx class for kids. And I'm like, how cool is that? If the kids know what that is, they want to be a part of that. They don't want it to be an extra, they want it to be a part of the, of the classroom. So just tapping into the vision that kids have, I think is important for us as a district. Obviously we want to guide them and help them make really good and wise choices, but I'm excited about that as well. I did want to mention, she's not here now, but the one young lady who came to the podium and said, I guess saving the world's not a major and I can't do that. And I say, oh, but you're wrong, you can. So we want to hopefully embrace our kids to do things like that. So I know that's a little bit high in the sky in Pollyanna, but I think it's worth the shot. I say a lot, I ramble a lot. Questions, comments, concern? You can go to the ODE website for a deeper dive, first glance at how we did on the report card. I was impressed with, obviously we have areas of improvement that we can do and we do focus on it. Accountability assessment is important, but it's not the only thing.
You know, Betsy, this is awesome. I'm glad it's going out now, because it is more, it does have a report card and heats up the success of how the learning measure.
I took a look back, Mrs. Schaefer, last year and last year was based on 2010. So, and it's, not a lot of people know that and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but it doesn't seem like that makes a lot of sense.
I agree.
I would much rather know what the requirements are for our seniors who are graduating this year than I would the progress, the success.
I mean, one of the components of that that drives me crazy is like it's ACT and SATs than kids who take them. So if a child takes an ACT but chooses not to take the SAT, it assumes that they've plunged the SAT.
Correct.
So, for example, that's one of the components. So how, how do you assume that a child who doesn't even take the test, their default is that they not, they wouldn't have passed it should they have taken it?
I don't understand. Yeah, I understand the, I understand the thought, that one behind that, but I share that frustration too. And we're talking about positioning Ohio to be one of the best states in the nation for job growth and proper finish for kids. That's something that hurts us, but we could probably work on to make Ohio a more attractive place for businesses.
Do you think they write like 86% of schools got Ds for Fs in that component? Or approximately like 16 schools got As for some such thing?
Yeah, I think either hit it right on or you're pretty close.
Yeah, great, great, right.
I think it's been off that the report card will have to be passed and I think this is another issue that we're going to have to address here. Certainly this highlights some of the issues with the report card. However, that being said, we're going to take a slightly different track and say there are areas that are improving. And I think before we see next year's report card, I'd like to see a periodic update on where we're going with those things. I think I do, and we probably like to know what are we doing to address that use that becomes an A.
Sure, I'll do that. I would think it's all the time thing and not just one more.
I think that'd be good.
I might, I might as well talk loud. Yes, I love quality profile. I think that, I appreciate it. Love the quality profile. I love the fact that we're able to point out many of the things that are happening across the district and our community, the things our students have all, they've all been. But I love most about it is I feel like it kind of gives our community a playground where we get to experience the world even so often. We get to see all these kids come up here and we just want to shout these stories out. And so I'm excited that this will land in the mailboxes of our families. With Linda, I also, I mean, there's a ton to be proud of, or a ton to be proud of with what the state delivers. But there's also places that we definitely need to be growing, we need to be looking at, and I know that your team is focused on that. I'm excited that we've made the realignment of the K2 and the all-day kindergarten. I think those are going to be a big step forward with the K3 literacy, but we all know that every day's a new day and a new challenge and so I'm confident, at least from what I've seen, we've got a great team behind us.
Oh, that worked beautifully.
Thank you.
The only comment I have are that, and you've already stated it, the work session, we will, we will be discussing, reviewing the five-year forecast. I think it's kind of amazing to me when I look out, so this five-year forecast that we're going to be talking about in work session goes through this full year 2023. When I arrived at the district in 2011, I thought looking out at 2015 was just so far off. But all the exciting things that are happening now and, and be able to look at the trends and, you know, having history to, to look through, but we will be reviewing that at the next board meeting that I, I just, it just kind of caught me off guard this full year 2023. So, how are we coming up? That's it.
With that, we come to the first opportunity for public comment regarding anything that's on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one will move to board reports, policy committee.
We had in our policy committee, gosh, it was this past week, we went through the big stack, giant stack of updates and the old updates for this year. They are in process. We're going to be having a first read coming up in the first meeting in November, but they are in the process of making all those changes in board docs and inside board. So it was a very productive meeting, great meeting, lots of learning and we'll have some stuff for you in a few weeks.
Amy Mason? We don't have anything from last week, but I read them off from last week and all the high. They're all on, they're all on. Butler Tech?
I just remind you for tomorrow night, we're all board meeting. That's by, that's by.
Let's read it.
I asked the chancellor, our last, our latest meeting that was going to happen is coming two, or next week today. I was part of Superintendent Di Maria's state superintendent advisory team. We can talk about the report card and the length, what I had mentioned before. Also to Mrs. O'Connor's point about the report card, though it didn't pass, but I'm hearing that somebody else will pick it up in January. Representative Dumpy is term limit now, they're not running, but somebody else will be picking it up for him. So I think there will be some movement on the report card. And I, I'm not quoting what I said or repeating myself, but I hope that the next iteration of the report card here is for five-year forecast, we'll see. And then I keep beating the drum about our seniors still don't know what the graduation requirements are. And that came out very loudly at that meeting as well and I'm hearing in November, December for, for the latest. So at this point, I do care what's in it and what the requirements are, but I'm always going to point out this kind of, if I had a senior, it'd be very frustrating. Sorry.
Did you all see any emails from OSBA about the Paterson funding regional meeting? That came out, speaking of emails from OSBA, that one came out last Thursday, but Friday, October 26th, is at Princeton Administration Center, but it will be registered, is the Southwest Regional Meeting. I will be part of that presentation and be one of the hosts of the, the regional meetings on that day. What I heard last week was that the spots are filling up fast and that we're worried that there's not going to be enough spots for everybody who wants to come. So we're talking about maybe de-owing it so it would be available for those people who cannot come, so they can still be good. This, these meetings will focus on concepts, not the exact numbers, because what happens every time you talk about school funding. So we hand out spreadsheets with everyone's districts and they look at the bottom lines, see whether they're losing or whether they're gaining money, and that's all anybody cares about. So what these meetings will be concentrating on are concepts. How much money does it take to educate students in the state of Ohio? And what should go into that calculation? So it will be high level.
Put it for our number?
Maybe.
Sorry.
Maybe. And everything's been very, we'll make everything very tight because they know that's what's going to happen, know that everything could fall apart if you start running calculations. So that's how, those will be both, that's the focus of that meeting, but we're also looking at there to be two, maybe three of those regional meetings. First one's concepts and then you start getting to A's. 10 to 12.
Just a reminder, I'm the only one that's attending the Southwest Regional, let's see. And first one. I don't know what. I'll see, I'll question. Yes. So that's, that's all right. It's the 11. And I'm quite ready now. I don't know if I've ever, I haven't ever checked out.
Never been heard of. Never been heard of.
Okay.
I did want to mention, I think you and I talked about, we just got a meeting. I don't know if I'm my favorite, I will send Brooke a little bit and I will work, that will work for you. I do want to announce that the, the Florida Outreach University Group will be having the next, the university session on October 20th on social learning support for kids.
the university session on October 20th on social reinforcement support for kids.
Adam, right?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, we have Treasurers' Recommendations, A through C. Do I have a motion for approval?
Oh, no.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? Anyone you please call roll?
This is Casper, yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
This is Shaker.
Yes. We have Superintendent's Recommendations, A through D. Do I have a motion?
Oh, no.
All second. Any discussion? We have personnel items and alarm agreement, difference in driving keys. Anyone you please call roll?
This is Casper, yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
This is Shaker.
Yes. We have our second opportunity for a public comment. I have one person signed in. So if they would like to go first, Dorsey Green?
Well, my topic actually goes into the report card more than I had it, but. My name is Dorsey Green and I have two children at Lakota. My spirit plan is seventh grade. And my fourth grader is in elementary. I want to take this opportunity to discuss literacy about Lakota. Literacy is a nationwide problem. The National Assessment of Educational Progress in 2017 reports that sixty-four percent of fourth graders read below grade level, sorry, sixty-five percent. Sixty-three percent of high school graduates are reading below grade level for traditional reading. Kids not reading at grade level in fourth and fifth, fourth grade are five times more likely to drop out of school. In May, my daughter failed the third grade reading guarantee. In August, Ohio cut the score, which now actually has the exact score to pass the third grade reading guarantee. We are in the unique, we have unique insight to tell you exactly what that score means because Cassidy was tested in March by a neuropsychologist. She was reading at a second grade, fourth month level. She made no reading progress at all in third grade. Last year's reading guarantee was actually the second grade guarantee. Cassidy was identified in second grade as being at risk for failing the third grade reading guarantee. The school followed the law to help my daughter. Most second and third grade, she received the most reading intervention the school offered. Cassidy recovered one level loss over the summer and made no progress in third grade. I started meeting with the school team at the end of November. Although I pointed out that Cassidy was making no progress at all during all of our meetings, the only change that was made was that she got some minimal split of the code, which is a phonics program. The school refused to do any further testing or any different interventions. I had the opportunity to meet monthly with a group of dyslexic moms who have had very good opportunities with phonics first. Phonics first is the program that dyslexics go through without the code. In my experience, without our outside diagnosis of dyslexia, Cassidy would not have been able to get into the phonics first program. This, even though she is now two years behind in reading. Our kids need you asking the tough questions on literacy. How many kids are reading below grade level at Lakota? What interventions are being done for these kids? What teachers are showing the best reading results? What are they doing? This information is all in HAC. I know I've looked it up for my. Much, please expand the phonics first program that is the reading. Please, please expand the phonics first program as the reading intervention program. Or at least as an alternative for kids who are showing no progress in the reading intervention. This program can help struggling readers, not just our dyslexic readers. The National Institute of Health and Human Development states, "When intervention is delayed, it takes four times as long to intervene in fourth grade than it does in kindergarten." Because the brain development and because of the increase in content students need to learn as they grow older. Please give our struggling readers a fighting chance and revamp the reading intervention program. Dyslexia screening and acknowledgement of at-risk students with reading issues is critical, especially now that you start having kindergartners taking all-day kindergarten. I have a kindergartner going into second, or kindergarten. I have a four-year-old going into kindergarten. And I will be watching this, and I will be telling all of the teachers that he is at high risk of dyslexia because we know dyslexia is great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to seeing literacy today just come through.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
I'm David Gorfman, and who may think I only come up here to speak with flag etiquette and bike pads. Yet here I am again. I attended the.
Say your address.
Seventy-five sixty-eight Kirkwood Drive. In Westchester. And I attended the Lakota East-West football game last Friday night. I saw somebody there on a great evening. And Lakota East football team came out of the tunnel and the lead runner had the American flag on a pole. And it really looked good. He ran straight to the sideline, led the team over there. And then went behind the bench and carefully rolled up the flag and set it down on the ground, which is not a big deal. Remember, this is astral turf. It's not the ground. But it's still a minor breach of etiquette. Maybe nobody else noticed, but one boy did. One young man on the football team, number seven, came over within seconds, saw that had happened, took that flag, set it up, leaned it up against the bench so it wasn't on the ground, and it stayed there for the rest of the game. I looked up number seven. That's Nolan Warren, senior linebacker for Lakota East. I don't know Nolan. I sent an email that evening. I went home and I said, "Mrs. Davis, you got to know about this guy." And that young man really impressed me, and of course, nobody else would have noticed him. He wasn't out there to try to get anybody's attention. Just a quiet gesture to pick up our American flag. So if this day has been able to do anything, Mr. Warren, I have to go to his head. Wonderful gesture on your part, too.
Would you like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one. Thank you for recognizing our student and turning that to our attention. I appreciate that heads up, but I'll be sure to also root out and recognize that student too. Matt, I actually think I'll defer to you, and we already talked about the papers on literacy and phonics program, so.
So I heard you. I agree with you. I'm not complaining. This is something that was brought to my attention last year. I was hoping that we'd be able to further along, but my curriculum department and curriculum team is working on this now. Maybe our team, our teachers come up to speed because our phonics program and dyslexia intervention weren't consistent. And that's something that we're working on now for the fall, hopefully, too.
I would really like to see if there are also seven libraries on the front page. As a parent, I have no idea if you're already encountered with.
Sure.
It was even wrong.
Yeah, I'd love to see if we can do a better.
I'll second that Matt has said that previously and I heard that at those reports. And that is ongoing concern that he has shared with us, something that we know, we know that he is working on to make sure that is taken throughout going forward. So with that, I will move on to closing comments, and I will start with you, Mr. Moore.
Just, just real quick, I want to mention that I had the opportunity last week to speak in the past conference, past, of course, State Superintendent Organization. And two things I would ask to talk about, I would ask to talk about. If you're really, what I can do in the middle of the conference, looking at going here to Lakota. The second thing, or then I would ask to speak about to all the students, the superintendents over there. There's been always coming up, so I want to hear a few things we have put in place. So anytime you give a microphone, we'll be five minutes off the top of the board. If you're willing, we'll be there, we'll be there, we'll contact you, so.
Always impressed with our students. Ten of them tonight. That was quite a number, and it was nice to see. I agree. We're doing something right. We're doing a lot of things right. But the other thing that I agree, and maybe pointed it out, the well-roundedness of our students. It isn't just about the academics. It's about all the other pieces that Betsy so greatly put into this report. But we're probably in a great place to be, and it's nice to honor those students.
Just following on to Matt's point about the student voice. One of our students has mentioned quality profile, public touch, blah, and this, the recognition. We actually had her last week to see to regular team. And she took some time points to Washington to see how the visit she made as vice president of MCCLA, which is a student organization. And she took several of the, there's one thirty, although she was actually the student of the faculty. She decided to get a word in there for us as well. And she did a terrific job. I got the call today. She wants to talk to me later tonight about how they're struggling. She was very excited to come incredibly, particularly. She asked some great questions of our curriculum team about institutions, though, before she walked in to speak with the Department of Education Director and some other people and several of our legislators. So congratulations to her on behalf of the representative of Silver. She is very.
This past Wednesday, Middletown City Schools hosted the first ever Night 1.0. It was a, was it ten or twelve, twelve? Twelve five-minute kind of short TED Talks from people around the region. And she cares around the region on the top of the planet. And I just wanted to give a shout out to our superintendent, Mr. Miller, who was one of the speakers and did a great job. And to your point a little earlier, anytime you get the microphone and you have an opportunity to give a shout out to what's happening here in Lakota, you can do that. And that was five minutes build of what if, things that are happening here in Lakota. And just really highlighted and captivated the audience with everything that's great that's going on around here and the things that we're doing towards. It was great to shout out to Marvin Stiles up there, Superintendent Middletown for Lakota. Pretty good guy here. And shout out to him and his beautiful campus up there. And just having that up there in mind, looking at sports, just come up and sharing the energy that's going on. It's great.
I can agree with Jenny. I want to tag on this. I know we all have concerns about what our improvements are. Like, you bet we never stopped thinking about that. Maybe you aren't so proud, right? Those ten kids were impressive. I will tell you, when I was in school, there are some stories, I won't say it on camera anyway. My mom, I had good long hair and would put my hair like back in a stick ponytail, and it would be really tight, and I'd say, "Don't do that. I don't want to look like straight A kids." So back then, it was the academy. Kids were like, you know, you didn't want to, don't we want it to be that? You know, because just, you know, they weren't as well-rounded as our kids are. So I'm very proud of our kids and the things that they're doing. And they're giving spirit. I say that all the time. They're giving courage to their, all of their teens that they give back. They're so impressive to me. That's just really impressive. And then I would also like to quickly say we have an impressive person sitting up here tonight. I can't think. We're all very excited. But Julie, our board president, has picked us one of the Westchester Chambers, one of excellence. So they only sent you one.
And again, we talked a lot about tonight with the report card and what we could improve on. And again, we all want to continually improve, and that's certainly been our focus. But there's a couple of areas where we did get As, that to me are areas that we have a lot of control. And that's graduation rate. And I think when we started our alternative academy, which looked at some of our students that were struggling in our traditional environment, that was a great thing for us and really allowed some of our students to thrive, and it was wonderful. And even at the East-West game Friday night, the principal of that academy came and she's like, "I have kids that are on opposite sides of the line right now," who, you know, hadn't been doing the best right before they found their niche and they found their way to succeed. And it was great to see them succeed in their football game. So our graduation rate, we're hitting an A in that component. And then progress, which actually shows year-over-year growth for our students. That's an area that we continue to get an A. And to me, again, when you have a student saying you continue to grow them at a very high level, that's an area that we continue to be very successful in. So I wanted to highlight those areas because I think that's very important to point out. Again, tonight for me was an area of pride for my daughter to be able to highlight her. But for her to be able to come up to the mic tonight right before I started the audience, she's like, "They asked me to highlight like Monin and Lakota. How do I pick one? I can't pick one. There are so many. We're doing bigger from elementary to my high school. I don't know what to pick. I'm the poster child of Lakota. I've done so many things. Like, you know, there's so many I could pick." And I feel like for so many of our kids, that's their experience. They've had so many amazing experiences. It is so hard for them to pick. And, you know, she was telling me the other day with her, all of her teachers this year. She's really enjoying that whole experience. And by the time they get to their senior year, I feel like they come into their own and find their way. And, you know, it really has. They look at this huge school. I graduated with fifty-eight kids. You know, this would have been scary if my college was the size of this high school. And I feel like they all find their way and find these great experiences and these great niches, whether it's theater, whether it's athletics, whether it's, whatever mix it is. Because they often find different ways to find their way. I feel so thankful that we have all these different opportunities because our scale does allow for those opportunities to be existent. So I'm sitting here tonight with a thankful heart for all the great opportunities that Lakota does not only offer my family, but so many of our students, whatever that may be, find their success story. From those kids that were lined up across from each other at the football game to my daughter taking care of them. With that, I'd like to take a motion for a third. Have a second?
I'll say it.
Seems to be a common theme. With that, anyone, you please call the rolls.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
This is Shaker.
Yes. I'm right around you.